Hello, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the October 22nd Foxborough School Committee meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Now I'm going to introduce Bill Yuchna, the Chair of the Select Board.
Good evening. Obviously, we are here as a joint committee tonight, the Select Board, as well as the School Committee, to fill a vacancy in the -- wait a second.
Open our meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to open the Select Board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And Bill, just, I'd read the same thing.
Yeah.
Want me to read it for you?
Just this meeting will be broadcast.
Welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 22nd. This meeting will be recorded live by cable access.
Can I just interject? We didn't make a motion. We can make a motion to open our meeting as well.
Okay.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to open the Foxborough School Committee on October 22nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.
So, as a point of information, we're here tonight to basically fill the position that was vacated on the School Committee about a month ago. Under the town bylaws, the town is directed to put together candidates that can fill this position until the annual town meeting, in which anybody who is interested will then run for the seat. It will come vacant at that point in time. There was a subcommittee that was created, and there were four participants that put in their names. The subcommittee was made up of two Select Board members and two School Committee members. We interviewed all four candidates. We reviewed their qualifications, and in the end, because we couldn't come to agreement on one candidate being the sole best candidate to fill it for the next six months, it's been brought back to the full committee with the recommendation of the two candidates, one representing the wishes of the Board of Selectmen and one representing the wishes of the School Committee. The interviews will be held tonight. The questions will be the same questions that were asked in our subcommittee meetings. We will then have a discussion on any comments on the candidates, and then we will vote to select the candidate to move forward. Again, this is for an unexpired term, and it will only be from this point until the annual town meeting in May. Okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to interject, just as a point of clarification, the term in May would be the remainder of the term, which would be a two-year term as opposed to the regular three.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think from just a point of reference for people, as far as asking questions, you know, Michelle, Sarah, Steph, and I were the ones that were on the other committees, so it would probably be good if the others asked the questions. We can start with Pat on your end to ask the first one, and I believe Taiyi is our first candidate to come forward for this, so if you'd like to, come up to the table.
Sure. If you want to introduce yourself, you can just speak into the microphone.
My name is Taiyi Court Odima.
All right. Thank you very much, Taiyi, and thanks for being here. So, the first question that we have here is, what has been your experience with the Foxborough Public Schools?
So, while I don't have direct experience as a parent of a Foxborough Public Schools student, I have engaged with the schools through performances and community events. So, at the theater, at the Marilyn Rodman Theater, I know some of the schools put on theatrical performances. I've gone to those performances with my family. I've also been to banderauma. I really support the arts, so seeing students in arts education, I think it's a testament to what our educators are doing, what our students are doing. And so, seeing the schools interacting with the greater community is where I've had the most interaction with Foxborough Public Schools.
Can I just say something? Well, I want to clarify maybe with Bill or Sarah. We weren't allowed to ask any other questions, but if it's something we need--
You can ask follow-ups.
Yeah, a follow-up question or something, just so the other ones--
We're in open meeting.
Yeah. Who won't?
So, it's a clarification. You can ask a clarification on anything that is asked in that question that you feel--
Yes.
But we can't add a new question that wasn't added.
Am I going again, or I thought--
No, no. Nate will go. Sorry.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. What brings you to sharing your interest in volunteering for the unfilled term?
Yeah. So, I ran for School Committee last year and met some of you. But I currently have two school-age children, so my passion and commitment to public education is even greater. And I think with elections, it's great that you get community buy-in, support to be in the seat. But now that there's a seat open in the middle of a term, as work is already underway, I'm already in positions of governance on a school board, so I think it's important to have a candidate who can hit the ground running and jump right in and meaningfully contribute to a lot of the work that you're doing. I know that you're currently doing some compensation negotiations, and that's something that I have experience in, and I think anyone who joins the committee should have experience in the work that's already underway.
Just as a clarification, you originally said that you don't have kids in school, but you just said that you have kids.
Yeah, they're in school, not Foxborough Public, but they're in private schools in Foxborough.
And what are their ages?
Two and three.
So, they're not school-age at this point? Is that what you're saying?
One's in preschool--
Yeah.
And then one is in, like, toddler school.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. What experience do you have with budgeting, negotiations, contracts, and policy?
Yeah. So, currently, I'm on a board for an independent school in Boston, and I serve on the Governance Committee. So, on Saturday, we have a meeting about budgeting for a large facilities project. So, I've been a part of those discussions around capacity, prioritizing what's best for the school and student needs, and also with deciding on the verbiage and the measuring-- monitoring measurements put in place for our executive administration. So, we recently hired a new CFO, so thinking about the things that we can use to measure progress and accountability when it comes to honoring their contracts. So, that's ongoing work that I do as a board member. And as far as policy, that comes into play as well, since it is an educational organization. So, as long as we're sticking to, again, like, the mission and vision of the organization, a lot of the leadership that takes place on that board is around making sure that whatever ideas come up, whatever projects need to be done, whatever hiring we're doing, is in line with the mission and vision for the school.
Thank you.
Any follow-up? Hi, Mark Elsman. What is your decision-making process when an issue emerges and you might not have enough information to address it?
Yeah. So, I think in any leadership position, when you don't have enough information, it's important to be transparent about that. And I'm not afraid to say that if I don't have enough information, I can't make a decision right now. Of course, it doesn't stop there, so then figuring out what information is needed to make an informed decision, I think that includes speaking to other admin, executive admin, so the superintendent, maybe the business manager, depending on what the issue is, making sure that the issue at hand is within the scope of the priorities of the board. So, what does it have to do? Is it related to student success, or equity, or budget? Collecting information from other stakeholders of the community. I think school committee meetings are great for open comment. Questions come in through email, so making sure that I'm collecting as much data as possible to make an informed decision, bringing that back to the committee, and having, obviously, respectful discussion to figure out how to solve the issue based on facts and not biases or other personal opinions. And then, as a committee, deciding on the best possible solution or what to do next. I do think that in situations like that, they're usually unprecedented, so once there is a solution or an answer to a question, then coming back and figuring out if we need a policy or some other measure in place to prevent similar issues from coming up again.
What is your vision for good communication between School Committee members and the superintendent, as well as with the community?
So, again, I think transparency is a priority, as well as respect. Our position as School Committee members is governance and policy, and the superintendent's position is more of that day-to-day management. So, I think respecting those boundaries will definitely help with collaboration. Everyone knows their scope of responsibility, so not overstepping those boundaries, but making sure that we communicate and collaborate within our own realms. And I think that the superintendent and School Committee should have one voice, right? There shouldn't be two different messages coming from each office. As far as the community, again, I'm going to go back to transparency, so I think meetings like this, where community members are welcome to come in and comment, to be a part of that process, is super important. I think that we should continue to celebrate the achievements of students and our educators, celebrate our schools, whatever it takes to really ensure trust between those who are running the district and those who are going to be impacted by our decisions. Thank you.
And lastly, are you interested in running for the School Committee seat in the future?
Yes.
Are there any other follow-up questions anybody would like to ask? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Allison.
Allison.
Good evening. My name is Allison Cully.
Hey, Allison.
Hi.
Thanks for being here today.
Thanks for having me.
All right. Thanks for coming, Allison. And what has been your experience with the Foxborough Public Schools?
First, I want to apologize for my attire. I was at an appointment today, and I was not expecting the two hours of traffic to get here, so I just got here right at 6:30. So, I apologize for the way they look. I don't normally look like this. So, I was born and raised in Foxborough. I started off at the Borough School, went on to the Ahern, and graduated from the Foxborough High School. And I have two boys now that are 14 and 16 that kind of followed in my footsteps, went to the Borough, went to the Ahern, and now are both at the high school. I've had the amazing privilege to, again, graduate from here, participated in athletics for pretty much my whole childhood, so a lot of the relationships that I have are a result of going through the Foxborough School System, so I'm very grateful for that.
Thanks for being here. What brings you to sharing your interest in volunteering for the unfilled term?
Yeah. I think I have the skill set and the resources and the qualities that it takes. I really believed that the candidates that have run in the past, I stood behind, I believed in what they believed in, and I really trusted that they could do the job, so I never felt the need to run. I just always wanted to support those that were running before, and some of you are sitting here today without even knowing I had your back. And I know I've seen the power of this community. We are a small town, but I do believe that we are warriors and we do fight together, especially in, you know, good and bad times. I was inducted into the Foxborough High School Athletic Hall of Fame this past year, and have such pride in that, and this is a way that I can give back to a town that's done so much for me personally. So, when this role became open, I thought, you know, this is my opportunity to give back to a town that, you know, I was born and raised in and came back to, so I have a lot of heart and love for this town.
What experience do you have with budgeting, negotiations, contracts, and policy?
So, I submitted my resume, so I hope you had just a quick second or two to glance over that. But I have a undergrad and a master's that were both concentrated on management. I worked in sales for a large skincare company for a good amount of years, and within that, I sat on different advisory boards that did look into public policy, policies and procedures within the organization. Some of the boards I sat in did deal with budgets when it came to products, when it came to sales incentives, and so on. Before that, I worked for a private equity firm in Boston, and I was, I sat as a liaison or kind of like a mediator, I think you would say, between the portfolio managers and the investment sides and the IT sides. And I sat in the middle and had to help them negotiate what they were trying to do, so whether it was, you know, implementing a new technology that the business side didn't want, but the technology side had to have for security reasons, or whether it was helping communicate over the needs and wants of the business units to help the IT create packages that would solve their best needs, so they could get their job done the best. But I think my biggest talent in negotiation is dealing with my 14- and 16-year-old boys every single day. For those of you that are parents, I think you can relate. And I recently started a nonprofit in Foxborough. It's a good friend of mine from high school, so we do it all, so we wear a lot of hats, so that's everything from financing to budget to policies, bylaws, and event planning. So, we're wearing many hats when it comes to that.
What is your decision-making process when an issue emerges and you might not have enough information to address it?
I think one of my strong suits is people and relationships, building them with people, because I think that having open, honest conversations is key. Transparency is key. So, for me, when I'm making a decision or when I need to make a decision, it's going out and finding all the facts that I possibly can. And I think I'm fortunate enough where I have a really strong network within the community that if I don't know the people that can give me the answers, I know someone that can find the person who can. So, that's how I deal with anything. If I have to make a decision, I go out and get as many of the facts I can, knowing that not one person has every single one of the answers. That's why it's important to talk to as many people as you can, gather their thoughts, opinion, and what they believe to be the facts, collect them all together, and then bring them back to the board or committee who is making those decisions. Share all the facts that I have and be open and transparent about those, and really try to make the decision as a team. I'm a big team player. I believe strongly in teams, that you can solve more problems and become better together as a team, so bring all the facts back and having a very open, unbiased discussion with all the facts to come to the best conclusion that is the best for, in this case, would be the town, the students, and the schools.
Thank you.
What is your vision for good communication between School Committee members and the superintendent, as well as the community?
I mean, I believe all three are a team together. You know, in the school system, the kids are the most important part. They're learning and getting better and stronger. Every day is the most important part, so the more we can act as a team together, and I think the way you do that is through really good, transparent, open, honest conversations, and taking what people are saying at heart and knowing that everybody hopefully has the best intentions for the students and the schools and the town at heart, and the communication is key. So, I think keeping open communication to the community on what's happening, keeping open communication between the School Committee and the superintendent, those things, if that happens, I think there can be a lot of great things that can continue to come out of this school system. So, communication transparency is key.
Thank you.
And lastly, are you interested in running for the School Committee seat in the future?
Yes, I am.
Any follow-up questions by anybody leading? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I'd like to entertain any discussion that the boards may wish to have.
So, I guess I'll kick it off. My question would just be, like, can the members that weren't on the subcommittee hear a little more about, like, what, like, how the subcommittee process went and what the motion was and how you kind of got there?
Sure. So, the process went, obviously, as we said, interviewing all four candidates, same questions that you've just heard. In the process of doing that, the four candidates were individually kind of gauged. We each took our own notes. We went through the process. At the end of the fourth interview, the subcommittee sat, and we discussed, you know, the positives and negatives of different candidates, and unfortunately, there seemed to be a pretty good difference between the opinions of the two parties. I will say at that point, Allison had not given us a resume, so we didn't have that as a, something to be able to look at, which we did have for all the other three at that time. So, I think that's, you know, that's also a factor. But when we came out of that, there was a vote. I initially vote, put a vote forward to bring forward two candidates, the ones that the School Committee representatives were interested in, the one we were. I was told by Sarah, which I still do not agree with, that it had to be individual votes, so we took a vote each. They, obviously, we put forward our candidate, and we voted two for it, they voted two against it. We did the same thing with their candidate, and then we did a third vote, which is actually the vote that I was referring to that needed to be done, which is basically just putting the two forward to come in front of the full, you know, Select Board and remaining four members of the School Committee.
You want me to chime in?
Sure, go ahead. Gladly.
Well, pretty much Bill, you know, explained, you know, how the process worked. Most people that know me, I'm pretty straightforward. I try to say what I say with respect. To be honest, I, you know, the decision I made, there were two people that, you know, we had brought forward. It was pretty clear that, based on what Michelle and Sarah said, that they were not interested in probably the top person that we thought would be able to step in, who's held the position before, and we just thought, you know, for the seven months, it would be seamless. And so, you know, we wanted to show some respect, because it seemed like that candidate wasn't the person that was being receptive from the School Committee members of the subcommittee. And I'll be honest with you, you know, Bill, you know, what Bill said, we didn't have Allison's resume. I feel like some of the answers tonight, and I'm not going to say why, it could be first time around, nerves, or, you know, now that you've come here, but I feel like a lot of the answers that Allison is giving tonight are not what she gave the first time around. She didn't elaborate on, I believe she said she, you know, she did make the joke about her kids, which we loved, you know? We've all been there, done that. She really didn't speak much about budgeting. She didn't speak much about policy. As we were listening to both of them, I was looking back at my original notes, and so, like I said, I don't know why the answers are different tonight. It could have been nerves. I don't want to speak for her. You know--
Can I just say, in the subcommittee, she did touch on the policy work that she did at the state level, because I remember I thought of Nate and the work that he does in his private life, so--
Well, no disrespect--
It definitely was expanded tonight.
No disrespect, because you're going to have your turn to say--
Yeah.
"I'm just going by my notes and what I didn't remember."
Totally fine.
So, like, when you guys say, you can, you know, "I'm just going by how I saw the initial." So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, where I am now, because I kind of feel like I was very impressed by Taiyi, and that's why, you know, well, actually, we were most impressed by Brent, and that didn't seem like it was receptive to the subcommittee, so we, I won't, it was a coin flip for me. So, that's where I came from, out of the four, where I saw it.
I guess we'll just go down the line. You have anything you want to say?
Sure. Sure. I thought I was extremely grateful, and I was extremely impressed that four people stood up to want to take this role on, especially just everything going on. As you know, at the end of the day, we just felt that all four had great qualifications, for sure. It was just a tough choice. We had to go with our gut. We thought of the students. We thought of the committees. We thought of the schools. We thought of the administration, and we just felt like Allison was the best fit for where we are here and now, today, in Foxborough with the students and the schools.
Comments on this side?
Michelle's--
Michelle, let's--
Just to speak on the subcommittee, so we're just looking, we were just thinking, again, of an individual that's going to step in seamlessly, like, without any issues. We just, there were four very definitely qualified candidates, and Sarah had said this, and I wholeheartedly agree, we would be happy to work with any of them, you know, this was a hard decision. This wasn't something that, you know, we took lightly. This is, this was very difficult for us, but the School Committee made that recommendation, as we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, my thought, you know, in coming here today and being an important part of, you know, the next seven months, and a decision that, you know, we're in a time where budgets are coming up, obviously, a lot of policies and contracts, that I think it's real important that we think long and hard on who that candidate is going to be to fill these next seven months, whether either one of them run again for the other two years in May, that's great, but it's the next seven months that I'm certainly going to make my decision on.
Pat? Pat, do you have any?
I'm thankful. I think that we have two extremely qualified candidates, and I'm glad that they have both put their names into the ring for this. I do think that there is something to be said about experience, professional experience outside of the education realm, and I think with owning a small business or part of running a small business along those lines, I think that does sort of naturally lead toward that budgetary and the policy side of things. I do think that's something where there is experience that just naturally translates. And I think another part of it, too, is sort of our role, is Dr. Burdos's job is to run the school district. As the School Committee, our job is to make sure that the policy is done well for Dr. Burdos and the budget. Those are our two core principles that we have to worry about, as opposed to actual governance for it. So, our job's to review Dr. Burdos and the job that she does as she runs the district. That's sort of a key part of it, and I think that that's something that's often misunderstood with the School Committee side of things, and I do think that that's a key part for it, in sort of that, I believe the town's spoken clearly over the last few years in terms of the School Committee looking for people with outside experience beyond just within the school systems to sit in these seats for the School Committee, and I agree with that from my own interpretation of it.
Kimmy?
I'm going to be very honest. I'm super torn, you know? It's your committee. It's super hard. It's really hard, and I'm really struggling.
It's hard for us, too, and we're struggling.
Right, right. And I attended as a resident, just full disclosure, I was there as a resident. I did not participate in any of the interviews. I will say Allison seems a lot more prepared today than she was at the meeting, you know, and again, that could be nerves. It could be, you know, walking into the unknown. I've been there. And then Taiyi, you know, she has a lot of experience and credentials and stuff. I don't know. I'm sorry.
It's a tough one. I think, first of all, it's a great sign of things to come when you have four qualified candidates coming out to fill a seven-month position. On the Board of Selectmen, we don't do school department work, and on the school department, you don't do Board of Selectmen work. I need to keep in consideration that I don't know what you do, you know what you do. Therefore, if you overwhelmingly support a candidate, then I feel you know what's best for your board and what will work.
All right. Everybody's talking? I'm going to just make a motion, I guess. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Taiyi. I practice, Allison's name is-- I'm going to just make a motion, I guess. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Taiyi. I, I practice, Allison's name is easy. Your name is not easy. I want to make sure I didn't butcher it. Taiyi Portodima. As, as the next, as the member to join to fulfill the, the unexpired term seat.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay.
I make a motion to nominate Allison for the unexpired school committee term seat.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations, Allison.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you both. We had four wonderful candidates and you, you two are wonderful. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. That is 100% true.
I'd like to make a motion to close the select board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you all for being here very much. Thank you for joining us. And thank you, Bill and Stephanie, for all the subcommittee work. We appreciate it.
As well, you guys as well. It was a tough decision.
Nope. We're going to keep, we're going to continue on with the Foxborough School Committee agenda in our regular meeting. And we are going to go to open public comment. But first, one thing that we forgot earlier, okay? While we restructure and get everyone seated where they need to be seated, we forgot to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Joe Garrity here to lead us. So why don't we do the Pledge of Allegiance right now? Thank you, Joe.
I thought we were going to do it at the beginning, but.
I know. I forgot. Sorry. Joe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. All right, we just need a minute. But if, if I have the sheet here, I'm actually going to call the open public comment out of order. We're going to invite Joe Garrity up. He's got something to share while we all get seated where we need to be.
All righty.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Joe Garrity, a former student of Foxborough High School. I live at 77 N. Carlan and Court. I'm here for two things tonight. First of all, the Legends Ball, the YMCA hosted the 20th Annual Legends Ball last night. And I was a guest testimonial speaker because for two things. One, the Y was celebrating its 20th anniversary of the integration initiative that supports programs for individuals, children, adults, and adults with special needs. And then the other thing with that being the 20th anniversary, I'm approaching to be 20 years of the Hockamock Area YMCA. Because that was the highlight, so I had to tell the, in my speech, how the program that the Y helped me become a successful person, how it was meaningful to me.
Joe, you did a great job and you looked handsome too. Can we give him a round of applause? Thank you for sharing. We're all very proud of you. Thank you for sharing.
And then the second thing I'm here for tonight is the ongoing contract negotiations for the teachers and ed assistants. My perspective in regards to that is we might have to come to a budget where music, art, wellness, and extracurricular athletics can't be funded if things continue to go in the wrong direction. But we hope we don't have to go there. But my point is, the teachers deserve everything that they can take between paid parental leave, living wages, fair contract, and anything that's possible for this to happen. I support, I have, give the school committee and administration my full support for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Talk about starting out on the right foot, right? Great job, Joe. Okay. Why don't we have Chris Fischel come up? Chris, we've got to, we've got to stick to our time, so if you can give us maybe one minute, please.
So I got five, but I shouldn't, shouldn't take five. All right. My name's Chris Fischel. I live at 30 Shoreline Drive. On September 4th, 2025, Mr. Walker, who works in the school, sent an invitation for adults to come help out with the play. So I, he gave us a link, and you could click on the link, and you could, I found that, I think last Wednesday, I could, it was a parent build night, so I was going to help build the set for the play. So I went to the school, I actually had the buzzer, and they let me in. And they had me sign in, and I told them I was going to work on the play. And then I went back and I helped work on the play. They had me hold a piece of painted cardboard. That was my job. And then Mrs. Fraser walked in and said, I should leave, so I left. And then the superintendent said, I'm banned from the school system. So if you could have her rescind her directive from October 20th, which is banning me from the school systems, I appreciate that. Because banning parents from schools is reserved for disruptive parents, and I'm hardly disruptive. I was just trying to help out. Okay? Thank you.
All right, we're going to call up Haley Knowles and Jenna Duckworth, please. If you can just say your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Haley Knowles. I'm a speech therapist at the Ahern Middle School, and I live at 29 Wall Street, Foxborough.
And hi, I'm Jenna Duckworth. I'm the occupational therapist at the Igo School. Up until this point, I'm Taylor in Ahern, and I live at 41 Shepherd Street in Foxborough. On behalf of the related service providers at Foxborough, we are here to express our concern with the current state of negotiations. As a team, we are highly valued and sought out by colleagues and administration. However, that same level of respect has not been shown to our team throughout the negotiations. Over the years, we have done endless presentations to support and highlight the district and our success with special education programs. We have done internal presentations to staff at PD Days and staff meetings. We have met with parents at PTO and CPAC meetings. And we have spoken to school committee about the role of related service providers across preschool through 12th grade, as well as our critical roles within specialized in-district programming. We freely give our time and give so much of ourselves, both inside and outside of our workday, to highlight and support the district across all these avenues. We do this because we are professionals and because we care about our, our students, our kids. Yet in return, we do not get the baseline level of respect with continued denial of recognition on the pay scale for our clinical doctorates, despite our efforts to educate the administration and school committee on equity and parity between doctoral degrees. The district says that our contributions and expertise are valuable. However, when we ask to advance our degrees to a doctoral level and to be paid accordingly, we are told no, or given an arbitrary reason that does not align with accreditation standards, both within Massachusetts and across the country, from the governing bodies of our disciplines.
In addition to all of the above, related service providers are integral members of the multidisciplinary teams that support our highest need students. Our expertise across all areas of child development allows us to be critical voices in the process of building specialized programs from the bottom up and adopting our existing specialized programs to meet the ever-evolving needs of our students. We are core members of all educational programming initiatives. By providing students high-quality educational services in district, more Foxborough children can remain in the public school system and still access the highest quality of education, thus also saving the district a substantial amount of money in costly out-of-district placements. Again, if our voices and expertise are valuable enough to be such an integral part of student placement and program design, why is our level of education not valued commensurately with doctorates in education? This extraordinary contradiction is unacceptable, frustrating, and disheartening. We deserve better. We are aware that the district plans to provide a comprehensive response to FEA proposals tomorrow. We sincerely hope that the district's response to the clinical doctorate proposals is reflective of the value that we bring to the Foxborough Public Schools and in line with the accrediting bodies which govern our professions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call up Holly Parsons, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Holly Parsons, AKA Señora Parsons. I've been teaching Spanish for the past 10 years in Foxborough, at the Ahern, then the Taylor, and now I'm at the Igo. I wish we were here tonight celebrating me. Happy 10 years, Holly. Here's, here's your longevity pay for a decade of service. But nope, nothing for 10 years except an all-out contract war. I've been dragging myself into work each day, knowing that I'm fighting to be valued by administration and the school committee. Oddly enough, around this time last year, I was in front of this microphone, this podium, and this audience. But not in Foxborough. I was in Providence. I'm a mom to two school-aged kids who attend public school there. Last year, their schools faced a budget crisis, so I stepped up. I spoke in front of their school board. I went to City Hall and spoke to their city council. I even approached the mayor personally because he threw out the first pitch at my son's opening day baseball game. I'd like to read some lines from those speeches. Last year, I said to those people in Providence, "I'm here tonight to advocate for Providence schools. I love living in Providence, and I'd really like to stay here." But after seeing the lack of concern this budget reflects regarding our most precious resource, our students, I find it hard to justify staying. I grew up in Medfield, but when my husband and I started a family of our own, we handpicked Providence as a place to settle. We want to believe we made the right decision. But tomorrow morning, when I put my kids on the Providence Public Schools bus, will I believe that they're in the right place? Because what are we as a city if not supportive of our schools, our teachers, our students, and our future? Please find a way to make Providence continue shining as my perfect place to call home. Odds are, if you're listening to me tonight, you made the decision that Foxborough was the right choice for you and your family. You probably look at places like Providence and think, boy, I'm glad we didn't end up there. But today, I stand before you, the superintendent, the school committee, and the good people of Foxborough. In an ironic twist of fate, I could actually almost repeat the same speech. I love working in Foxborough, and I'd really like to stay here. But after seeing the lack of concern this budget reflects regarding our most precious resource, our students, I find it hard to justify staying. Tomorrow morning, when I greet my students in my Foxborough classroom, will I truly believe that I am in the right place? What are we as a city if not supportive of our schools, our teachers, our students, and our future? This is a true plea for you all to come to your senses. During my advocacy work in Providence, one thought kept coming back to me. Who, who is it that thinks that teachers don't deserve more money? How do they sleep at night? How is this even a fight? The biggest heartbreak came from the realization that some of these people were chosen and elected to support our schools. I needed to find out more about them. And just like I did then, this year, I read up on you, each of you, on the Foxborough School Committee page. One of you lists yourself as a homemaker. One is a biologist-turned-volunteer, one a college student, and one a financial supervisor. So I'm a teacher. Would it be okay if I approached your bosses with ideas about how much you should be paid? How about I train you to protect my children in an active shooter situation? But then say, hush, hush, when you suggest you deserve better pay? Bottom line, today, in Foxborough of 2025, teacher morale is at an all-time low. It wasn't always this way, but without a doubt, it is now. Teachers and EAs are talking about leaving. We're hearing from people who have left and have it better in other places. I'm begging you, please make it stop feeling this way. Please help me stop waking up at 3:00 a.m. every night filled with anger. Please show us that you care about us, your really talented staff, and not just that you need any warm body in the room. I'm searching high and low for a sign that everything I've given to Foxborough matters, that I, Holly Parsons, matter, that all the days I come home from teaching, so exhausted I have nothing left to give my own children, matter. Not just by my students, not just by my fellow teachers, but by administration, school committee, and the town, that they want me, me, to stay. And they're willing to stand by that belief through their words, their actions, and ending this fight for fair wages. I want to stop feeling invisible. The ball is in your court.
Thank you. We're going to invite Lisa McDonald, or McDonald.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Lisa McDonald. I've had the pleasure of being the only physical therapist that serves this district's needs for the last 34 years. I'm here tonight to read a letter from one of my colleagues. Her name is Colleen Foley. She says she apologizes that she could not be here to speak with you tonight. As a special educator working with our district's highest needs elementary students, she urges you to listen closely to the requests brought up by the phenomenal and necessary ed assistants before you. I speak genuinely when I say that the programming I create would never function without the supports provided by the EAs. They're the backbone of the specialized programs. Without them, I could not do my job. Here is just an abridged list of responsibilities I see the EAs in my classroom carry out every single day, before having to seek a second or third job to make ends meet. Academic support. They reinforce the instructional strategies. They collect data daily. EAs make it possible for our students to be integrated into the classrooms. I cannot be in one, more than one place at a time. This involves willingness to learn curriculum at different grade levels, work with the grade-level teachers, and be supportive of all students. They provide behavioral and emotional guidance. They help students regulate their energy and emotions. They teach social skills. They implement behavioral strategies. They keep staff and students safe, while also teaching onlooking students and staff that sometimes we don't have the words needed in a moment of challenge. This can involve physical outbursts. They teach and reinforce daily living skills, communication, bathroom use, social interaction, while preserving each child's integrity. These skills are essential for growth in school and beyond. Safety. I cannot emphasize enough that we need not only physical bodies, but capable bodies working in these positions to keep our kids safe. No one can be in more than one place at a time when working on children's safety. Things can go south fast. Our EAs are diligent for safety on the playground, in the hallways, making sure materials or choking hazards are not ingested. And in the worst-case scenario, I pray never happens, they are prepared and willing to keep your kids safe if the unthinkable incident were to happen in our schools. I understand that Dr. Berdos was at our recent evacuation drill, and she witnessed the level of need of our kids and hopefully shared with you the staff expertise that was needed to keep these kids safe in that drill situation. If these Victor, these men and women are willing to put in the extra mile with work by training well beyond the calling of education, training that often happens before and after school because we're on demand from the minute our beautiful children arrive until the bell rings at the end of the day. They learn specified teaching strategies, data collection, safety care. They help students complete tasks for daily living. They wipe their tears when they fall. They encourage students to do things that are hard, and they put smiles on the faces of all our students. They follow the guidance given to them, and they become warriors for our students, embracing inclusivity and teaching all students that everyone has something valuable to contribute. When you heard these skilled and dedicated professionals ask you to give them a living wage, I want you to remember these things. They're the first faces your babies see when they start preschool. They're the ones who comfort your tired five- and six-year-olds after a long day of kindergarten. They're the ones who'll make sure your child is safe at recess, lunch, and using the facilities on a consistent schedule. They are the champions of our special ed students in ways too numerous to list. They play an integral part in the inclusive practices we champion here in Foxborough, practices that recently earned national recognition, with two of our schools receiving national banner status from Special Olympics. In conclusion, Dr. Berdos and school committee, we are warriors in Foxborough. We stand united. Please don't let these dedicated individuals walk away from their calling to serve our children because they can't keep food on table for their own children. We all deserve a livable, competitive wage because we are an elite team here in Foxborough. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you all. Just going to interject with a little bit of business here. I want, anyone who's seen the packet, you will notice there are sets of minutes in there. But we just did not have time on the agenda, so we will be pushing those minutes forward to the next meeting. All right, so that's why we do not have them here. I just wanted to explain. We're going to have Jessica Booker, the digital learning coach, come up because we have a teaching and learning highlight, AI in Foxborough. Thanks for being here, Jessica.
All right. Good evening. I'm Jessica Booker. I am one of two digital learning coaches here in Foxborough. And I am here tonight to share with you how we are educating both staff and students on AI and increasing AI literacy within our own community. Before I begin, I do want to thank both Amy and Stephanie for the professional development opportunities that they have allowed us to take over the last year, so that we've been able to be the best resources possible for our staff and students. So finally, as I get started, if you have any questions, please just ask, kind of as I go. Don't feel like you have to wait till the end. So, all right.
Oh, you have to point it towards the back sometimes.
So what you see up here is, earlier this year, DUSI released a framework on how to teach AI in Massachusetts schools. And I think something important to note is it's not telling communities or teachers that they have to use AI, but if they do, these are some principles to sort of follow to make sure that it is being used ethically. So you'll see that there are five pillars there. I'm not going to, obviously, you can read through all of those, but data privacy and security, transparency and accountability, bias awareness and mitigation, human oversight and educator judgment, and academic integrity are kind of the five pillars that they really want districts to be considering as they look at AI tools. So that is just kind of a bigger level overview. And DUSI also did put out a module, this is an online resource, that was created as well to help kind of build AI literacy in Massachusetts educators. It is free, it's available, and we've had some teachers in Foxborough already go through this, and so it is just another resource that's available for the community and for our teachers. To kind of go off of that, we have been offering also some professional learning around AI for our teachers. So as you know, we have the Summer Institute at the end of June, and both myself and Dan Ambrosio, the other digital learning coach, did a three-day training, which we had participation from Foxborough teachers as well as other area teachers, who, we did a workshop around AI and different considerations with it, but then also giving kind of practical places to look and tools to use. We are doing pathways this year as part of professional development, and we have our AI lab. We have 32 educators that are doing that this year, and it's been really exciting so far, because we've been sharing lots of resources and giving people lots of time to create things, and there's a lot of kind of exciting things coming up that seems like people are working on. We also are giving staff time in there as well to complete that module with DUSI. They do receive a certificate of completion when they do that. Dan and I also put out a weekly and monthly publication. The Byte by Byte is a weekly tip. It's a tech tip, it might be related to AI, but it might also be related to Microsoft or something with digital literacy, computer science standards. We also do a monthly newsletter, kind of highlighting different things that we have been talking with staff about over that last month, and then both of us are always available for one-on-one and small group consultation. Also, just want to quickly highlight that there is AI training also at the curriculum level meetings at the middle school. Both Karen McKinnon and Noel Hendrickson are really kind of also working alongside of us here, and the two platforms that are up on, that are displayed up there, NotebookLM and Diffit, are the two that have been introduced to teachers so far in those curriculum meetings. I think what's nice about those is that it gives them a chance to kind of debrief, try things out, see how things work, and decide if it's a good tool to implement in their classroom.
Jess, can you talk a little bit about what those two do? Because they're so exciting.
Yeah, so NotebookLM is, it's a free product that is from Google, and what's really cool about it is you can upload up to, I believe it's 15 different transcripts, and it will do a multitude of things. It can summarize all of those and put them into like a concise, you know, piece of writing. But the really thing that we really love about it is it turns it into a podcast as well. So earlier this summer, though, with that presentation that Dan and I gave, it was three days. I uploaded all three presentations, and it turned it into a 45-minute presentation of us kind of going back and forth. It was really cool.
Did you feel it was accurate to the message you were giving?
You know, it was pretty accurate. It was a little bit creepy, to be honest, because the voices kind of sounded like us too, and so it's like, God, I can't do this.
I'm going to publicly say AI scares me, but I will also admit that I don't know that much about it.
And I think, and that's where we're at too, and you know, we're learning about it in real time, but making sure that people are educated about it and how to use it. So anyway, just wanted to quickly share that. And then finally, what we've been doing with students, for the first week of school, there's three days with the FHS Academy, and where we have all students that they had instruction delivered to them around AI, kind of big, more thematic topics. We've also been touching on plagiarism in a number of places and kind of how to avoid that with AI. And then also this year, we are doing some lessons targeted to our freshmen, and you can see those are the themes. We are on lesson four next week, so we'll be talking about algorithms and how your algorithm exists and, you know, what that looks like. So, things that we're doing with students as well. And again, it's not, I want to be clear that we're not, we're not trying to get kids on the AI, but it's really teaching them about it and how to use it ethically. I just read an article a couple days ago about how they think this is going to have a bigger impact than the internet even did, so we'll see.
Can I sit in one of those classes?
Sure. Please.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then finally, I just wanted to cordially invite everybody to our event here, November 6th. I think this is hopefully a good transition for this, but we are doing a presentation called Growing Up Wired: Teens, Screens, and Mental Health. So we'll be talking, some AI is incorporated in that as well, but it's really digital wellness, creating boundaries, creating boundaries with technology use, talking about social media, relationships with phones, things like that. So we'll cover a lot of topics. Excited.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate that you're here. Does anyone have any questions?
I mean, I think this is great, the district taking a proactive approach to AI, because so much with people talking about, like, I think, like coding's a common one where you hear, where they're like, "Oh, the kids need to learn how to code." And I mean, from my understanding, AI may make a lot of those coding jobs sort of pointless because the AI is basically going to take them over. So I think it's important that, as a district, our kids are being prepared for, great, we don't know what's going to happen in the new world with AI, but at least be familiar with it, stay fluid with it.
Absolutely. And we're encouraging them to, just being able to really develop good skills, like those good interpersonal skills, because that is what is going to differentiate us from AI, so.
The whole thing is just, yeah, it's a big topic. I love that you just said that, though. That's a really strong comment, that AI could be bigger than the internet, because kids, all they know is their lived experience. But we remember a time before the internet, some of us, not you. Some of us may remember a time before the internet, and the hallmark of the internet, and how life-changing that was, and you look now and think about, how do we do our, you know what I mean? Like, how do we do our jobs without these? Our walking computers in our hands, you know what I mean? So it really is, that's a pretty powerful statement.
I think back to when I was a kid, at least, the math teachers would always say, "You're not going to have a calculator in your pocket all the time," and, I mean, sure enough, it's right here.
You have a camera.
So it is, I just think of that with this whole AI, sort of trying to get out in front of it.
But you do need to know if you have the right answer in your pocket.
Thank you. Thank you. You need to know how to get there without AI.
And I think that you, you know, made a really good point, that in the time when the internet came out, people were really worried. I read an article, and they referred to AI as far as the word calculator, to go to your point there, and being worried about the calculator. So it's so much about being proactive and talking about what is it as a resource and how it can be used in a productive way, but still, we're not having it substitute for the things that are so important.
Can I ask a quick question? You did touch on PD and what you provided for professional development. Sorry, I'm using an acronym, and you know, I hate doing that, but anyway, for professional development for our teachers, I don't want to go way off topic, but one of my, like, just as a mom, how do you mitigate, how do teachers mitigate things like plagiarism? And, you know, we didn't, like, how do you mitigate that? That's a tricky one.
It's really tricky, and you know, it's going to become more complex, and there's not one site that you can go to and run it, and it's, you know, it tells you, and there are ethical and some equity concerns around using those as well, just with, you know, what students is going to potentially target. But what we've really been trying to focus on with students is how to ethically rewrite what they're seeing on AI, so practicing, here's, you know, here's what AI gave you. It doesn't sound like you. That doesn't, you know, necessarily fit what I would expect a 15-year-old to write, but how can we say this in our own words? And now we've made it our own idea and rephrased it. And so we've really been trying to focus on that and just hoping that the kids, because we know they're using it, it's right there in their pockets, so just trying to work toward the, yeah, the ethical rewriting with them. And as I said, there are places that teachers can go to, you know, to see if things have been plagiarized, but it's not, it gets to be a slippery slope.
I've been reading a lot of articles, and it goes back and forth between talking about teachers trying to mitigate AI and police it for plagiarism, things like that, and also the other side of things where teachers are using it to help them grade test it up. So that's tricky when you have both lenses that you look through. It's, thank you.
And just on the topic of professional development, over the course of the past maybe year and a half, two years, we've ensured that both Jess and Dan Ambrosio, the other digital learning coach who's not here this evening, that they've been able to attend a number of AI summits and learn more about how AI is working, how to support students in the use of AI, how to use AI as a thought partner, as opposed to an offloading of cognitive thinking. I can't remember the way that you phrased it the other, a ghostwriter.
Not to be a ghostwriter.
Not to be a ghostwriter. We want to avoid that, but also, you know, that level of understanding that Jess and Dan have of those tools, of NotebookLM, which is very cool, if you're ever curious and you want to check that out. But also Diffit was another resource on that list as well, but we've really ensured that our digital learning coaches are able to understand, know and understand, have access to all of the different AI tools that are out there, and understand how to support both teachers and both students. I learned so much from them, too. We meet regularly and walk around the buildings and talk about what's happening with technology. So in having this resource, our kids are in good hands, and I've even observed, Jess, very recently, within the past few weeks, teaching kids how to navigate, identifying whether or not the output that they're seeing is AI. Did a robot do this? Or was this a real human? And really getting kids to start to be able to evaluate and understand the differences between the two. And it was just a really great, engaging lesson. Kids were really having a good time with it, too, which is very knowledgeable.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that understand and bias section was also a very exciting thing to hear about, and I think that that's a great skill that, even though they're learning with AI, will be something that the students will be able to apply throughout all sorts of cross-section of their life. So that's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Honestly. Anyone else have anything else they want to add? Thanks. Thanks for everything you're doing. We appreciate it. You, Dan, everyone, we appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move right on to the first reading of policy. We have our Dynamic Policy Subcommittee, Nate and Pat, and they've got policy IKF-E. Why don't you guys talk to us a little bit about that? And we have Dr. Donovan here, sorry, and Dr. Berdos, that are going to discuss that as well.
Sure. So you might recognize the name of this policy. This is our competency determination policy. At the time that we had adopted policy IKFA before June of the past school year, we had not received any guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees on what that policy should look like or even what the coding should be. So you'll notice IKFA was our competency determination policy previously. This is now a newly proposed policy. It's IKF-E. So really, it would be swapping out IKFA for IKFE. Just to talk to you a little bit, bless you.
Just for a point of clarification, does that mean we're going to rescind?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Sorry, thank you for that language. So Dr. Donovan is here to answer some questions as well. About halfway through the summer, July, middle of July, the Department of Education and MASE issued new guidance and then also issued a model policy. So you'll notice, if you do a side-by-side comparison of IKFA versus IKFE, it does go into a lot more granular detail than the prior policy did. So there is that piece. There's some language in there about, you know, late-enrolling students, about students with disabilities, English learners, that were part of our workshopping internally, but not necessarily spelled out in the policy previously. But now that model policy is recommending that we include that language in full. The other piece that is different, the regulations that were issued in the middle of July have now delineated between completion of coursework and mastery. The state is now defining that in the regulations as not just completing, let's say, your Algebra I course, but also demonstrating mastery on the Algebra I final exam. So you will see a table in the newly revised policy that kind of spells that out and identifies the two items for each course. One is completion of coursework, so completing and passing that course, and the other piece is completing and passing that final exam. We've built in some guidance on how to reconcile that. If a student did not pass the final exam, what is the approach going to be in order to reconcile that and ensure that that student has another chance at meeting that competency determination? Is there anything that you would like to add, Dr. Donovan?
I think one of the things, the policy recommendations from DUSI, or the requirements from DUSI articulated, was that districts had to come up with a pathway to be able to determine whether or not a student met mastery. And they specify that that has to be a final exam portfolio or a capstone project. And this applies retroactively to students who are now seniors and who, in their freshman and sophomore year, did not have the requirement that they pass their final exam to move forward. So part of the reason why the box, when we look at that table on the right side, it just has so much information in it, is we needed to find a way to determine how a student may have mastered content but didn't do well on their final exam. So we chose, intentionally chose grades, because we didn't have a requirement that kids organized a portfolio. Not all of our classes had capstone projects. So we chose grades because we have electronic records, and we can go back and we can look at how students performed on major assessments, large writing assignments, and we have used that data to go back through our student body, our current seniors. With this policy, in its current draft form, all of our seniors who are at the high school will meet the competency determination, and we know we have the data that backs that up. So we feel as though this is a policy that we could, that we can operate within at the high school, and that we have the data to be able to dig through, and we have time, if there's a scenario that the data wouldn't necessarily support, we have ways in time for students in our sophomore and junior class to make it up. And then, just when you look at this chart, science in particular, with the removal of MCAS as a graduation requirement, the language says that a student has to earn their competency determination in biology, chemistry, or physics. So as you compare that text to the text for math in ELA, it is, the language is different because a student may pass a biology class and not pass the final exam, and if they don't, if for some reason they didn't meet the threshold of 60 or above on major assessments, they have the option to earn that in chemistry by moving forward. So prior to last year, almost all of our students earned their CD by taking the biology exam or the retest. Now that will be kind of wide open to any three, any of the three science options.
And lastly, the state is requiring that we adopt this new policy and adopt this new policy language and submit to them a copy of our policy along with evidence of how we are workshopping these policy along with evidence of how we are workshopping these individual student scenarios to ensure that all of our students have a pathway toward meeting the competency determination. So it will become a state report, uh, that we have to submit, uh, by the end of December this year, uh, which is the reason why it's here now.
Thank you. None of this seems like it was easy. So thank you all for your time, effort, energy, and attention. Is it okay if I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When we adopted IKF-dash-A, we identified that a few students under the old competency determination may have opportunities to come back. Like now that we have the IFKE, is that also retroactive to students in the past? Like if they qualify based on this, let's say, you know, over the, over the course? Does it work the same way? Do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
I, I do, and it does. If you look on the, uh, page three, at the bottom, the second bullet point up from the bottom, you will see that language again.
Thank you.
So we've not lost that.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, that's all right. It's, it's three pages.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I need, I know you guys don't have any questions. All right. So would you like us to first, uh, deal with IF, uh, IKF-dash-A? Do you want us to do this?
I think this is, if it's the first reading, do we actually need to get rid of this one before we start the first reading? Or do we need to do a second reading?
Oh, that's right. We need to, at the second reading.
And then do it at the?
So November 19th, when we meet, I think it's 19th, we meet again? That's where we'll actually vote. So we'll leave this, we're not going to rescind this just yet.
Correct. Leave it in place now.
Yes.
Okay. And then once you adopt the new one.
Okay. So we know what our assignment is here. Um, okay. And, and the state took a look at all of this, everyone, like, we have, everybody sort of weighing in on this.
I think if you were to pull up the model policy with MASE, you would find that it, it's, uh, 98% consistent. Uh, we chose to put it in table form to make it more digestible.
Thank you.
Uh, and that, that would be the distinction.
Thank you very much. Anyone, and do you want to, I don't know if you want to add anything, I think?
I, I don't have anything to add, but I can, uh, start this short reading here.
God bless you.
File IKFE, competency determination. One of the requirements for graduation in Massachusetts is a determination of competency in subjects previously covered by the MCAS. In addition to other requirements for graduation, students must have been determined by the district to have achieved mastery of the common core skills, competency, and knowledge in set areas, and satisfactorily completed coursework that has been certified by the student's district as showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks. For students in the class of 2026, a student who has earned their competency determination prior to January 3rd, 2025, in the areas of mathematics, ELA, and science through a passing score on the MCAS subject tests or retests will be considered to have met the competency determination requirement in the relevant subjects. Beginning with the class of 2025, a determination of competency shall include demonstrating a mastery of skills in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science in accordance with the district's grading policy on the final assessment, capstone, or portfolio. Satisfactory completion of relevant coursework aligned to the standards measured by the high school English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science MCAS assessments administered in 2023. Beginning with the class of 2027, an additional requirement for mastery of skills and satisfactory completion of coursework in U and US history will be part of a student's competency determination. A student enrolled in the Foxborough Public Schools will be determined to have satisfactorily completed coursework and demonstrated mastery of skills in accordance with the district's grading policy and the requirements outlined below, thus earning their competency determination. ELA, satisfactory completion of coursework requirements. Students may have earned their CD in ELA by passing the ELA MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student did not pass the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, they are required to take the equivalent of two years of high school English Language Arts courses in grades nine and 10. ELA, mastery of skills through assessment or capstone or portfolio. Students may have earned their CD in ELA by passing the ELA MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student did not pass the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, they are also required to pass their final exam or capstone or portfolio. If a student fails their final exam in ninth and 10th grade, students will participate in a portfolio review of prior assessment data to determine if they have met 60% of the frameworks included in this summative assessment or portfolio. Math, satisfactory completion of coursework requirements. Students may have earned their CD by passing the math MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student did not take the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, they are required to take the equivalent of two years of high school math courses, algebra and geometry in grades nine and 10. Math, mastery of skills through assessment or capstone or portfolio. Students may have earned their CD in math by passing the math MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student did not pass the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, they are also required to pass their final exam or capstone or portfolio. If a student fails their final exam in ninth and 10th grade, students will participate in a portfolio review of prior assessment data to determine if they have met 60% of the frameworks included in the summative assessment or portfolio. Science, satisfactory completion of coursework requirements. Students may have earned their CD in biology or chemistry or physics by passing the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student, student did not take the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, they are required to take and pass the equivalent of one year of any of the following disciplines: biology, physics, chemistry, or technology slash engineering in grades nine, 10, or 11. Science, mastery of skills through assessment or capstone or portfolio. Students may have earned their CD in biology or chemistry or physics by passing the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025. If the student did not take the MCAS prior to January 3rd, 2025, students must take and pass their final exam or capstone or portfolio. If a student fails their exam in ninth, 10th, or 11th grade, students may participate in a portfolio review of prior assessment data to determine if they have met 60% of the frameworks included in the summative assessment or portfolio, or they may attempt to earn their CD in science in their next sequential class. History, beginning with the class of 2027, satisfactory completion of coursework requirements: the equivalent of one year of US history or AP US history in grades 10 and 11. History, beginning with the class of 2027, mastery of skills through assessment or capstone or portfolio. In addition, students must take and pass their final exam or capstone or portfolio. If a student fails their exam in 10th or 11th grade, students may participate in a portfolio review of prior assessment data to determine if they have met 60% of the frameworks included in the summative assessment or portfolio, or they may attempt to earn their CD in US history by taking the next sequential class. Additional considerations for the following student groups will be considered when determining competency. Students with disabilities. The Foxborough Public Schools must both provide a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities and must also determine that the student has met the competency determination and local graduation requirements prior to graduating that student. Students with disabilities who have been placed in out-of-district placements must meet the requirements of the competency determination policy of the placing school district. Discussion of the competency determination must be part of the IEP team's transition planning. English Language Learners. The Foxborough Public Schools shall, on a case-by-case basis, determine appropriate courses necessary for English Language Learners to both achieve language proficiency and meet the competency determination requirements. Late-enrolling students. Students who enroll in a Massachusetts public high school after their ninth-grade year may be granted a determination of competency by the Foxborough Public Schools in one or more of the following ways: transcript review by district administrator, additional course requirements as determined by district administrator, a qualifying MCAS score of at least meeting or exceeding expectations on the relevant high school MCAS assessment, or by meeting the standard for a substituted equivalent that the district certifies satisfies the same academic standards. Current or former students not earning their competency determination may participate in the following appeals process. Students enrolled in the Foxborough Public Schools in the classes of 2003 through 2024 that did not earn a diploma due to not passing the MCAS may appeal the decision and request a transcript review to determine if they have met the competency determination requirement. Students enrolled in the Foxborough Public Schools in the class of 2025 and beyond may appeal the competency determination by participating in transcript and portfolio review to determine if they have met the competency determination requirement. Legislative references, MGL Chapter 69, Section 1D, 603 CMR 30 dot 00 dash 30 dot 05, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education competency determination.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have a couple thoughts. Real quick, am I allowed to interject them now? Right? Okay. Just for housekeeping, I talked about acronyms earlier, just for the, anyone watching. If you don't know, DESI refers to Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. In, within the policy, I do feel, you know how I feel? I feel that, um, MCAS should be, we should define it in the first appearance. I, same thing with ELA in the second paragraph, English Language Arts. Um, on the third page, IEP appeared for the first time, Individual Ed Plan. I don't mean to be fussy. I just feel like we're doing the work.
I think that's important.
Um, and then the third bullet down in late-enrolling students, there's just a space is missing between qualifying and MCAS. It's, it's showing us one word. Just, whatever.
ELA is defined later on in the?
No, it's defined later on, just like in the reading of the policy.
Switch them.
When you see the fir-, yeah. So, and then maybe you can just swap them, like flip-flop them. Um, yeah. Sorry.
Okay. I also have a few, sorry, annoying housekeeping things, which, which may not matter to anybody. Um, on the first bullet point on the first page, after portfolio, portfolio, there should be a period or a comma or something. Um, and this occurs again under math on the, in the first column, the second bullet after 10. It, uh, also occurs in history, the first column after 11. And under late-enrolling students, none of them have punctuation.
Punctuation.
But I'm wondering if you should use a comma for the first three and a period for the second, because it's like this, 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 or, as opposed to, but I don't know grammatically, how do you want to use it? And I don't even know if it matters because I was really bad with punctuation and bullet points. I'm sorry.
Well, good for you for picking up on it. By the way, it matters to me, so.
Okay. Thank you. So, I mean, these are just housekeeping things. I'm sorry. Just.
Good eye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your thoughtfulness, time, and effort on this matter. Is there anything else? Any, anything, anyone wants to add?
I think it looks thorough.
Thank you.
I agree. Yes, very.
Thank you very much.
And I'm much more comfortable with this version as opposed to the previous version. So I appreciate that the state has weighed, finally weighed in and made something a little bit more concrete on that.
Because it spells everything out.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, yep, yep. And I'm more comfortable with this also because now we have something to look at from the state, so we can confirm that we're doing the right thing.
Correct. I agree.
It feels like it's becoming like a living document. It keeps changing and, you know, it's, it's good though. It's good. We're making progress.
And, and honestly, with the Governor's Graduation Council, it is also poli-, uh, possible that this will change again. Uh, but in, in putting this on the agenda now, uh, we're, we'll make that December 31st deadline. Uh, and if it changes again, we'll, we'll have a conversation again.
Sure. We'll pivot, you know? We're all, we're all in this together. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Donovan. Thank you, Dr. Bur-, uh, Burrows. Um, all right. That, if it's all right with everyone, we're going to move on to the next item, which is overnight travel. Dr. Donovan?
Yep. Um, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm just, uh, coming, seeking support for, uh, two overnight travel opportunities for the music department. One is their annual spring tour, uh, which is a trip that the, um, school committee has approved previously. Uh, this year they're planning on going to Philadelphia. And then the second is for the essentially Ellington competition. Uh, that is a program that our jazz program intends to apply for. If they get accepted in the spring, it's a relatively quick turnaround before the event, uh, in, uh, late April this year and early May. So our practice has been to apply, to seek permission to attend, uh, so that we don't have to come back in the spring on short notice. And the, and the ensemble can begin to plan right away.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the overnight travel for the 2025-2026 school year as presented today.
A second?
Any further questions, comments, or, um, questions or comments any further? Okay. All in favor? And that would be 400. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Take care. All right. Superintendent update, Dr. Burdos.
Um, I'd like to start off first, which is kind of going back to one of the items that I had spoke about at the last superintendent update, at the last school committee meeting. We've completed all of our drills, as far as our safety drills. And so, you know, it was a little bit different this year in that, um, we've always done our evacuation drills annually to our rally points. We've also had other, um, our stay-in-place, which are now, we're calling those hold with our standard response protocol, but we've added, as you are aware, the lockdown drills. And so that was something that we've done with teachers and staff, but to have students engage in those. So just wanted to take a few minutes and kind of give you a little bit of feedback that, um, heard from staff as well as students and then parents as well. So having the combination of those, um, all in a, in a day, our public safety partners were very busy with all of us on those, um, scheduled days, but they went really, really smoothly. And a lot of thought and effort, um, was spent in really thinking about how to do those from a developmentally appropriate stance. And that is something we heard back from parents. They appreciated the trauma-informed, uh, approach that we had. So the, um, planning for that too, was having the assemblies with the students to talk about what it would look like. They knew that it was not an emergency. They knew that it was a practice drill. And then we practiced on the same day, the hold, which is, um, a matter of being in the classroom. It, it could be a medical reason, that we need to be able to just have, clear the hallways. And that we also had the evacuation, and then we had the lockdown, all in one, uh, day. And those were on different days for the most part, just because of the time that it took. Um, really want to thank our students, our faculty and our staff, our administrators, um, and our public safety and everyone who made them go so smoothly. Um, it was something that, uh, teachers were nervous about as far as to do the lockdown drills with students. But from the feedback that I heard directly and indirectly, um, from administrators as well, is that they felt empowered. And they felt as though that they were prepared. They were a little nervous, as I just said, but that the way that it went, it went really, really well. Um, a lot of communications went out to families and, um, conversations with students as well. So when I think about some of the feedback, um, from the students, I'll, I'll start, start there. High school students, so I have a superintendent student advisory council at the high school. And in speaking with them, the comments that came from our high school students were that, um, it went really, really smoothly. Our teachers knew exactly what to do. They were prepared. They were able to direct them, and it was clear that they knew exactly what they were doing. They also talked about how they know the world that we're living in today, is that it's necessary. Um, some of them talked about having, um, other places that they've been outside of school and to be able to have those skills and to have those conversations. Um, but again, the consensus really was that it was needed and they appreciated the way that it was rolled out and that they felt that, um, even with their peers, that everybody took it seriously and that it was really, really smooth. Um, from the middle school level and speaking, uh, with administration and some staff, the same thing that students really felt, the conversations were good. They had a lot of what-if questions, as we can imagine students would, when it just comes to, um, safety and security of the building and their, um, evacuation. And they felt really good with what took place and all of the conversations that they had in just being able to really ask those questions and have those conversations. Um, and again, the, the teachers and staff felt as though it was, um, really well thought out and planned and that, again, that, that word of being empowered. Um, so they felt really good about how it went. And I was there with every single one of the drills, so I got to observe that firsthand too and saw that. Um, with our youngest learners, um, one of the, one of our kindergarten teachers shared that, um, and so you think about a five-year-old. So when we had our evacuation, uh, to our rally point, we bused the students back. And so one of the students had said, "Well, I'm not sitting in the right seat on the bus. I'm sitting in a different seat." I'm sitting in a different seat." So you think about, from a five-year-old. But at the same time, they were just ready to just get back to school. And to have, you know, is it going to be a normal day the next day? Because it disrupted their day. But at the same time, it was really, it was smooth. And I can't understate enough that it was because of all of the planning through the student assemblies, through principals, and what they did with staff, to make sure that they were all able to deliver the message in a way to where students would feel that it was comfortable, as it could be, when we think about just going through drills, because we also know muscle memory. And we talked about, you know, we've done our bus evacuation drills. We've done our fire drills. And that just becomes muscle memory. So, I want to just, again, a shout-out to all of our teachers and staff and administrators for that. From our parents, what I heard directly through our parent leader meeting is one of the avenues of hearing feedback, as well as parents that have reached out to administrators. So this is kind of a combination, that students, they were able to talk about it, and they were able to explain, you know, what they did, and that their teachers were able to explain it to them, and they knew what to expect. And I think that that's a big piece that brings a feeling of comfort in knowing that their teachers had this, and they knew what to expect, and that the drills where the lockdown was different for them. The rest of them, they had had, and they had engaged in those. But they, the parents felt as though that it was smooth, their students came home, and it was really a feeling of gratitude and positivity in how that it was handled. That was from the parent feedback that we had received. So that was really encouraging to hear. And then the other piece, too, thinking about parents talking about with our school resource officers. Their children, they see our police officers out in the community, and they know them. And I thought that was such a testament to the visibility of our SROs in our school. So whether they're talking about High Five Fridays, or they're talking about Protect and Serve, and they're serving them lunch, it was really good to hear that the kids recognize our SROs outside of the school context. So, again, really positive praise from parents, from students, and from staff on those. The other, any questions before I move on?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. You hit all the high notes.
So as far as technology, I just want to just do a quick reminder of our online verification. We still have families that have not completed that, and it's really important, because that, when we speak about safety, that's emergency contact information. And if any families are having difficulty in accessing that, please reach out to the schools. Even if they need it translated, we can help them with those. So I would say, if you haven't completed that online verification, please do that. In speaking of technology, I would just like to take a moment and do a shout-out to our technology department. As you know, you heard a lot of what took place over the summer in the August presentation from our Director of Technology, Mr. Hayer. But at the same time, we had a really positive, smooth start to the school year. But over even the holiday, the Indigenous Peoples' Holiday Weekend, we had technology staff here over that holiday weekend, where they then installed 30 of our touchscreen interactive display boards to get those into classrooms, and that's part of our CIP plan, as well as we continue to refresh through the capital plan laptops that are taking place. So just want to take a moment to, again, acknowledge our technology staff. Couple last things. Athletics, winter registration is taking place, which seems crazy that that's already with registration for winter. And then just wanted to touch upon, going back to Jessica Booker's Teaching and Learning Highlight, as far as when she talked about our November 6th Growing Up Wired parent presentation that we're going to have. November 6th is also the International Day Against Violence and Bullying at school, including cyberbullying. And so, that particular day, so the month of October is anti-bullying, and we're taking that into November 6th as part of that day on the UNESCO, which stands for the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. UNESCO is an agency of the United Nations that the United States is part of. And really, it is focusing on mental health, cyberbullying, all of those things. And that's part of our focus on that day. And the purpose of that is to promote a safe and inclusive learning environment. It's also to highlight the importance of mental health and well-being of our students, encourage educators, parents, and students to take action and address digital safety as a growing impact when we think about online work. So on that day, we will be encouraging everyone to wear blue and orange, and those are the colors when we think about anti-bullying, because blue is widely used, especially as part of that National Bullying Prevention Month. And then the orange is worn in a day of unity. So you'll be hearing more about One Foxborough, and encouraging all of our students pre-K to 12 on November 6th to wear blue and orange. And this year, as far as the theme for UNESCO, which is always the first Thursday of the month, it ties in very nicely with what we will be doing with our Digital Learning Day, as that particular theme is going to be on Screen Smart: Learning to Be Safe in the Digital Era. So we encourage our parents to come out for our parent presentation that evening that Jessica Booker and Diana Rosio will be presenting.
That's fantastic. That's great that it all came together, and it's going to be surrounding safety with that focus on the digital, like a global level. That's awesome. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Any questions? Thank you very much. I know you've all done a lot of work. Next, we're going to go on to our School Committee Student Report. We have Yasmeen and Stevie.
Okay. So, yearbook orders are due at the end of this month for anyone who wants to get a yearbook. It has to be by the end of the month. If it is not, you don't get a yearbook. Costa Rica trip, which happens in February, the registration is open up. They're having informational meetings regularly. Senora Smith is who anyone wants to go to if they have questions about that. And then, if you are applying to college, you need to get your orange, there's like an orange form you have to fill out from guidance, that allows them to send all of your information to colleges. And then this Saturday, at Gillette Stadium, there is a trades event from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. with a whole bunch of different, like, schools with trades. It has a whole bunch of different companies talking about internship opportunities, a whole bunch of really good stuff, and that's this Saturday at Gillette.
We have club photos on Monday, the 27th. We also have our last home football game this Friday, which is also senior night for the cheerleaders and the football players. And that's it for today.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And along the lines of Costa Rica, will you be going? You were at Spain last year. No?
I think so.
For any parents, Stevie, I'm going to put you on the spot here. For any parents who might have any hesitation about international travel with Foxborough High School, do you recommend it?
Yeah, it was a 10 out of 10.
Just, if anyone didn't hear at home, she just said, yes, it was a 10 out of 10. So, anyone who's on the fence, it's highly recommended. We're going to go next to middle school, CTE Exploration Procedure. And that's Dr. Stephanie Burrows.
Okay, so, at the beginning of this school year, early September, the state issued new guidance that frankly impacts our vocational schools at a greater magnitude than it does impact us. But that, those regulations were twofold. There are requirements for public schools, and then also requirements for vocational programs. So what you have in front of you is a procedure overview. The new guidance requires that we develop a clear policy and procedure that supports communication and collaboration between us and our local vocational programs. So ours are Southeastern and Norfolk Aggie. So, it requires us to memorialize essentially what we're already doing. And in addition, those new regulations require our middle school to advertise and promote the opportunities that we have within Foxborough Public Schools through our middle school Project Lead the Way pathways, our high school Project Lead the Way pathways, and as you know, the Innovation Pathways that we're also starting at the high school. And then lastly, the final piece to that regulation is developing MYCAP, MYCAPs for grades 6 through 12. You'll see that at the bottom of the first page of this document. MYCAP is My Career and Academic Plan. It's really goal-setting and career conversations that our school counselors are already having. But it's formalizing that and developing that into a year-by-year and annual scope and sequence across grades 6 through 12, to ensure that all students are having the same access to those conversations. So, what you see in front of you is a result of that guidance. It is not the case that MASE has model policy language on this, so we're not proposing that we adopt this as a school committee policy. However, we are sharing it with you, so that you are aware. Some of the things that you'll see here are new. On the front side of this document, you'll see the MYCAP piece and the Innovation Pathways piece. Those are the only two elements that are new. Everything else is everything that we've already been doing. It's just a matter of memorializing it. Over the course of the next few months, you will see some changes to the middle school website, as well as the high school website, to highlight these opportunities for students and make sure that it's published. It is the case that our middle school guidance website does speak to a number of the vocational collaboration bullet points that you see on the backside of that document as well. So, that piece is already there. It's just a matter of formalizing those opportunities that are internal opportunities. So, this is another one of those items where the state has issued guidance for us. We've followed their model template, and we have to submit to the state that we've shared this information with our local governing board, and submit by November 1st, in this case, to share that we have that language formalized, and that it's up on our website, and our school committee is aware. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
I think you've explained it very well. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. Well, we're going to move right along to approval of student activity accounts. Ms. Sheridan?
So tonight, as part of the policies and procedures for the student activity accounts, there's an annual requirement for the school committee to approve the list of the student activity clubs for both the middle school and the high school. So in your packet, you have a list of those clubs. The other thing that is required annually is a vote to establish or change the maximum balance that may be in each student activity checking account. So the middle school and the high school both have a checking account for these funds. Those who are not real familiar with the student activity accounts, so the clubs that are voted here are allowed to raise money, and that money is raised by the students, and that funding belongs to the club, to the students. They make the decisions on these funds. They are not intermingled with the school, so they are kept in separate accounts. So they have a checking account at the middle school, a checking account at the high school. And these funds are highly regulated. They have to be put into a separate account, an agency account at the town, when they raise those funds, and they collect interest and such. And then when they want to use those funds, it is put into these checking accounts to purchase our... An example might be if they were going to do the prom. They would request the money from their agency account, goes into the checking account, and thus, they get to be able to pay for the prom. So this year, we have, we are recommending that the balances in those checking accounts remain the same as they were last year. So at the Hearn Middle School, that's $20,000, and at the high school, it's $25,000. So if anybody has any other questions, I'm certainly here to answer them. But otherwise, the list of the clubs is in your packet for both the high school and the middle school.
Thank you so much.
So, I did have a question. When was the last time these were raised? Because I'm just thinking about how much more expensive everything is now.
This is only the amount of money that's in the checking account at one time. So like I indicated, when they raise that money, they get the funds in. It goes to the treasurer and is put into an agency account, all right? So then, they can request the money to put into a checking account to pay for such things. And the amount of money that's just in this checking account is... So, once they get near the $20,000, they just request it, again, for some more money to come in. So, if I thought that they should be a little higher, I would recommend a little higher. But by looking at what they've been doing, it seems to be that the $20,000 and the $25,000 are okay for right now. But that's what it is. They don't want to be in the checking account such a high amount of money that's sitting there, because the funds are really supposed to be without, when they're not using it, in that agency account, where they're able to collect the interest. Does that answer the question? Yep.
Can you clarify the difference between a discretionary club and an active club?
The discretionary club is that clubs that, these clubs would not... I would say that these clubs are not able to raise the funds. They're like, the principal has a little bit of money in a student activity account that he's able to save if he wants to save. I would say discretionary fund would be like clubs that want to see how that club would be. So they might start a club to see if there's going to be interest in that club. They're not really a club that has been really established and set, so that principal has the discretion to have, he has a little bit of funding to allow them to have discretionary funds before they become the actual club. So they may not have, like, that stipend for the advisor and stuff. So, I would say it's kind of a little bit of, like you said, when, a starting of a club to see if it's going to gain any interest. Because some, a lot of times, like, a club might start, and the students will get together and, you know, establish a club, but sometimes it doesn't go anywhere. And other times, it skyrockets and really goes somewhere. So that's what I would do. The discretionary club is for, these are clubs that, they're waiting to see if this is really going to gain, you know, be able to be popular for a club, to be really established, to move up to the area where they start raising money, open an account in that account at the town. So, that's how I would describe the discretionary funds. And the principal has the ability to do that. The real clubs that are on the top, so they have to fill out forms and such, which would come before you, that, saying that they want, the principal would sign off on clubs that they want to... I'm sorry, the students would come, say they want to start a club. The principal would either okay it, so this is where they get a list of the kids that would come. And then they'd be able to open an account in the agency account, and then they can start raising money, okay? But the discretionary clubs are ones that the principal has a little bit of money for them before they get to this, before they get to the point where they're going to be really a sec club that's going to start raising money and such.
So just as a point of clarification, is the principal of the school the person who decides when they go from discretionary to active? Or is that through some other pathway? How do they become an active club?
It really, it really is the test of time. When a student, a group of students come forward, and they have an interest, and they want to start a particular club, it's kind of, we're going to try it out and see if we can gain enough interest. And then if it gains enough interest the next year, and then the next year, then it will be the principal making the recommendation that it ends up staying as an active club.
So ultimately, the principal would make the recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, and once that club has established that they're raising money, and the money is in that discretionary fund, not the discretionary fund, the agency fund, it can only be used for that fund, I mean, for that club. So if, say, for example, a club has money in it, and suddenly the club is no longer existing, then there should be a, I have to look at your policy, but there should be something in the policy that states what happens to that money when the club is dispersed and there's no longer a club. And oftentimes, the policy might read that I would bring it to the school committee to say that this club no longer exists, and that sometimes the money would go to the donation account for the principals to use for school.
For the next discretionary club that gets created. Sure. Thank you so much for that thorough explanation.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any follow-up questions?
I make a motion to approve the student activity accounts as presented by Ms. Sheridan.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. All in favor? That would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. We're going to move right along to community update. We're going to start with you, Pat.
Everybody be careful next Friday on Halloween, especially those young drivers, especially in those neighborhoods. There's going to be littles everywhere. And also, streetlights. Make sure that you enter the request on the town website for the form. If a streetlight in your neighborhood is out, you can fill out a form, and they'll come to, eventually, I'm told, come to fix the streetlight, so they're working again.
That's a great share. Thank you very much. I didn't know that.
Thanks.
Michelle?
So, CPAC, on Thursday, November 7th, will be doing a digital citizenship and safety presentation, you know, for students with special education needs. And that actually goes along very nicely with the keeping, what is it, keeping wired? The one that Jessica Booker was here to present. I wrote it down. The one that Jessica Booker was here to present, I wrote it down, I'm sorry, I've got my glasses on, I can't read it.
Growing Up Wired.
Growing Up Wired, thank you. So that, I think that'll go along, that fits in nicely with that. And also tomorrow night will be the first concert, musical concert at the high school, it's the Voices and Strings.
Nice.
It's at 7 o'clock, I believe, 7 o'clock.
Awesome.
Oh, and the registration for the CPAC workshop will be going out, there'll be registration needed because it will be an online Zoom presentation.
Oh, that's, that's actually a good note, that's great. So people can join in from home?
Yes, they can join in from home, and then we do the registration, so it's actually going to be held, I believe, through a cable access network, so again, it'll be privacy, so people can't log in without registration, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I got two Halloween-related ones. Tomorrow at the Booth Recreation Complex, between 4:30 and 6:30 is the Uncommon Pumpkin Patch Carving Night, so feel free to head on down, and all families will receive one pumpkin that they can carve, and if it's carved by Friday, it will end up being displayed. And the next one is Saturday, there's a Halloween parade, starting at 2:30, gather at the town hall, and then, you know, parade and trick-or-treat your way up to the common.
Are you going to go to that?
I might, we'll see.
Oh, just might, you know, they asked me to be a judge, and it was one of the hardest things I ever had to do, because they were all so cute, how do you pick the best? There isn't, there isn't a way to do that, Dr. Burrows.
I think I shared all my things.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burrows.
I'm okay.
Ms. Sheridan? Either one of you? When's the next vacation? I'm waiting for that update.
I just know that we do have a Tuesday off in the middle of the week.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't really have a community update of myself, for myself, but thank you to Clay Super, who donated all the pumpkins, those pumpkins are free? Yeah, so thank you for that. Anyway, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second? All in favor? Thank you very much, appreciate you all. Thanks.